Good evening, everybody. Today is August 20th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to apologize for a late start. Our closed session ran just a little, a few minutes late, so bear with us. Before I get started, I'd like to call upon Councilmember Andrews to lead us in the Pledge Allegiance, please.
Please stand if you're able to.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, if you can please take the roll.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews?
Present.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr., absent. Councilmember Goldstein?
Present.
Councilmember Roach?
Present.
Councilmember Syrup?
Present.
Councilmember Zermeño? Mayor Salinas. Thank you.
Present, thank you. Let's see, let's see. Next, I'd like to call upon our city attorney for our closed session announcement for July 19th, August 13th, and then August 20th.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will quickly go through this report. First, the council met July 23rd, not July 19th, 2024, and that was a closed session to discuss labor relations with all bargaining groups. Council took no reportable action. Council met August 13th, again to meet with the council's labor negotiation team, took no reportable action regarding all labor groups. Council met this evening to discuss two matters. The council discussed labor relations, took no reportable action. I would point out that at tonight's meeting, Councilmember Bonilla was absent. All other council members were present. Council also gave direction to staff regarding a pending workers' compensation action involving retired Officer Rubel Cava. That action was approved by motion of Councilmember Goldstein, seconded by Councilmember Zermeño. It was approved unanimously with Councilmember Bonilla absent. Council also met with its labor relations team, took no reportable action, although there are a number of items on the agenda that contemplate council approval this evening. And as noted, the closed session adjourned at 7:00 PM. That's the report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next, I'd like to ask if our interim city manager has a report.
I have one item this evening. I wanted to draw everyone's attention actually to the pre-punctuary area where our economic development team has created a new effort. It's called Discover Hayward Made. They've got in some of our display cases some items from local businesses. This month is focused on food manufacturing, so the showcase highlights names including Casa Sanchez, Shasta, Sugar Bowl Bakery, Pepsi, Columbus Meats, and Pacific Cheese. We will continue to do this and try to get information out about the wonderful businesses in our community and draw attention to them, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, and I want to apologize because I, of course, I skipped public comments and I went straight to the city manager's report. So I'd like to go back to public comments. This is reserved for anybody online or in the audience. I would like to make a public comment on our agenda item, on the agenda. But before I do that, I'd like to read this. "The public comment section provides an opportunity to address the city council on items not listed on the agenda or informational staff presentation items. The council welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner within established time limits and focused on issues which directly affect the city or are within the jurisdiction of the city. As the council is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, items will be taken under consideration and may be referred to staff. The city council welcomes comments, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or omissions of the city council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the city council. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated." So with that said, I'd like to go to my cards. Actually, let me go online first. I only have two hands. Our first public commenter is Roe Aguilar.
Good evening, all. Welcome back, city council. I just wanted to know if I would, if I should speak now on the consent calendar?
Um...
Wait till the consent calendar...
What number, what number of the consent calendar did you want to talk?
Number five, of course.
Okay. I will, well, you know what? Why don't you just speak now and then that way we can just take care of it now. Go ahead.
Okay. So, I want to express my appreciation to the HHTF members, Mayor Salinas, and councilmembers George Syrup and Dan Weinstein for recommending the HHTF be converted to a permanent council committee. It makes sense. Homelessness and lack of affordable housing are still with us, so I want to advocate for two more urgent agenda items for the Housing Policy and Resource Committee in September and December. Number one, how can Hayward build more affordable inclusionary housing? This is the primary path to moving low-income children and their families to the middle class. We must act proactively, and the HPRC is situated to give this issue the intention it warrants. Two, how can Hayward respond to the Governor's Directive to dismantle tent and RV encampments? The council must get serious about implementing compassionate and humane solutions that address the 400 or likely more homeless people in our city. Please take action now and refer these two issues to the HPRC. Use the Housing and Policy Resource Committee. Use it to design for Hayward the solutions we have talked about but have not implemented: inclusionary, affordable housing, and large-scale transitional homeless housing. And I think this coming session, I would like to talk individually to each council member about these issues and how they see the city addressing and solving that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next caller is TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. This is TJ on behalf of Hayward Concerned Citizens. I wanted to thank the city for the social media stats on the fireworks citations issued from the Fourth of July holiday. Perhaps the greatest complaint our next-door community posts about this time of year is the fireworks. The frequency they're going off, the trauma to pets and people, and the perception that the city is doing nothing in terms of enforcement. Our response to this is for us as a community to continue to be proactive and to partner with the city for public safety. That means continuing to report any fireworks activity to HPD so they can track the hotspots and concentrate on those areas that have repeat offenders. There are others who'll say, oh, stop being a killjoy and let them have their fun. Well, unfortunately, the perception of fun has changed from when I was a kid. The worst back then were bottle rockets, and now you have M-80s and the like. The fun is now disturbance of the peace, accompanying gang activity, dangerous sideshows blocking streets, gun violence, vegetation fires near residences, et cetera, and simply stated, nobody has control over where these fireworks will land. Being proactive is also about having the ability to monitor and react in real time, and to that end, we want to advocate for council consideration of strengthening the city's existing US program use policy to enable police and fire to use drones to identify and issue citations where there's legal fireworks use in Hayward. When you Google what local law enforcement agencies use drones for this purpose, there are several in California, including LA County, Sacramento, Sutter County, and up the central coast, all that report much success with this technology readily available to them. So, discussion to be continued when the AB 481 review rolls around in May, but please do consider. I hope the outcome by next year will be way more citations, or with robust means of enforcement, no citations at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Zoom user.
Hi, I'm Suzanne with Hayward Concerned Citizens, and I agree with all that TJ said, but I did want to say thank you to the mayor and the council members because I do feel that what the city has done over the last couple of years in response to the fireworks has improved fireworks in my neighborhood a bit. Not necessarily on the Fourth of July, but the weeks prior to and after the Fourth of July have been, there have been a lot less fireworks in my neighborhood, where in the past, they would go off for three weeks before and three or four weeks after constantly, as if it was the Fourth of July. So I just wanted to let you know that I do feel that there's been some improvement, and I thank the mayor and the city council for actively pursuing this situation, and I hope that you continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Peggy Gernsy.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank the city council so very much for the fire department that we have had in Hayward for well beyond my 53 years in Hayward. The staff of the departments have been phenomenal. Captain Don Nicholson retiring this year and giving the CERT mallet to Captain Marty and Captain Sam to build and rebuild CERT in Hayward. Some of the visionary things, one, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for that fire station on Wynton Number Six. Watching the Chabot, men and women coming out of classes there and the use of that building, I'm blown away. They're going to help set up a ham radio room up there so that during any kind of, you know, horrible situations we get, we will have an active ham radio situation. With CERT, these two firemen have a vision to expand our CERT teams hopefully at each fire station as a kickoff. We would like to present things into the high schools to maybe have a junior CERT team because we need the kids older than 18 to be on CERT officially. But the last two Thursday parties we've had, the people that have come to our booth, yes, they first come for the kids to get a fire helmet, but the adults are sticking around to listen and pick up the pamphlets that we have about keeping their home safety, about a CERT class starting in October, about how easy it is to come to the class and a short amount of time to learn to stay safe. And it really, really looks like, from what these two captains have told me, that the two times at the parties were phenomenal, and the classes that we've had as CERT members have just been great. So, city council, thank you for supporting the fire department. I know it's, some people think it's a no-brainer, but if you guys don't support them and the city members don't know how hard these guys and gals work, we're not going to have a safe city. So again, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Returning back here into the chambers, our first speaker is Faith Kelly, and if you can please give us your name and your address and city you're from.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Faith Kelly. My colleagues and I live in Alameda County and are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans USA is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past election. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for a valid election seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, is it Jana Schreiber? Did I say it right? Yeah.
My name is Jana Schreiber, and I am here to read into the record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation, whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act of 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. The number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help American Vote Act of 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca St. James.
Thank you, mayor and council members. My name is Rebecca St. James, and I'm here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election, whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted, whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Colette, or Kellet. Kellet.
Thank you. Hi, mayor. My name is Michael Kellet. I live here in Alameda, and I'm here to read into the record the last section of the USA Resolution. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness and be given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Six, ballots regardless of the entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant, randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic, electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded, be it resolved that the Hayward City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California State Secretary of State and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marcus, is it Burkey?
Burkey.
Say it again?
Burkey.
Oh, okay. Burkey.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council members. As stated, my name is Marcus Burkey, and I'm here to conclude our presentation. What you heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of our 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable, so we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com. One more time, unite, the number four, freedom.com. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, is it Rand Jupa St. James? Last name is St. James? No? You mean the only person who put their city where they're from is not here? All right. Next speaker is Carol Criss.
Can you hear me all right? I applaud my members of the, or the people who read the resolution to you, and I'm here to tell you that I worked the elections for 10 years. I have worked as a clerk, a judge, and two times I was an inspector. In 2020, what I observed in changes in procedure became very concerning for me. I did file a complaint with the Secretary of State because the changes open up the system for more errors and potential fraud. Those irregularities... Those irregularities include the failure of poll workers, of election workers, to take the oath of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. Since most elections involve federal candidates, this is a violation of 5 U.S. Code 3331. The institution of new voting machines from Dominion, which occurred in 2020, produced a paper ballot because even voting machines produce ballots that contained a QR code. Now, the voter cannot read a QR code. This constitutes a violation of the chain of custody, which begins when someone registers to vote and ends when their vote is counted. The submission of VBM ballots has become a very haphazard thing. They have set up voting receptacles throughout the county. I observed the opening of one of those receptacles for the November general election in 2022 and saw the, it was raining. The ballots were spilled on the ground and wet. It was chaotic, and after 8:00 p.m., the people picking up the ballots accepted ballots from people who walked up to them. This is not a secure way of handling vote-by-mail ballots. The transportation of reconciled cast ballots was a tradition that the people working in the, at the polls would count the number of ballots in the ballot box and compare it to the number of people who have voted. That procedure is gone, and that explains why so many ballots, why we have so many more ballots than we have people who voted. And finally, the closing of precinct polling places, which has created a good deal of confusion among voters. We no longer vote in the neighborhood polling place. We vote at voting centers that are open for multiple days. All of these things create problems potentially, and I want to thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Wong.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom. I am a homeowner here in Hayward. I live by the Jackson Triangle and I want dressed blight, namely graffiti, gang graffiti in our neighborhood. We are a underrepresented neighborhood. We generally have a lot of low-income people living in the Jackson Triangle area and south of it, like the Tennessean area as well. So currently, we have, two gang factions are graffitiing over each other on city street signs, on our fences and sidewalk, and it is going to create a problem if we don't tackle this head-on. And maybe some gang task force unit can actually talk to some youth and to dissuade them from joining any type of gang activity. We have a lot of small children in the neighborhood, a lot of new families, and one of my neighbor had recently had a child, and we want to keep them safe. We want to keep our neighborhood clean and free from any type of, this type of activity. So this is more like a broken window theory. If we clean it up, we keep it away, we keep it off our street signs, telephone poles, off our fences, and we get to mitigate and prevent this type of activity from coming in. If gang members sees another rival gang members' tags on their buildings or on the streets, street signs, they are more inclined to come and take over that territory. So we want to head this off by doing more proactive cleaning of the street signs and especially the sidewalks. They are spray painting the sidewalks. So if somebody could please look into that and clean that up in our neighborhood, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our next speaker is Inez Jasper.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor Mark Salinas. I came here today to discuss the easement included in my property deed for 24453 Second Street in Hayward, which was recorded on April 14, 1955. I am concerned about recent developments affecting the sole legal access to my property via the easement at Amrit Luth and Second Street, situated within the Parkside Heights development. The developer, Pulte Homes, has presented planned changes that deviate from the original city-approved plans. Specifically, Pulte Homes intends to proceed with installing vertical and rolled curbs, yet they refrain from implementing the agreed-upon drainage system and other improvements. I have been informed by Pulte Homes just yesterday that the city is only requiring the installation of vertical and roll curbs to complete the bond sign-off process. I'm coming here to inquire, can this be confirmed? As of yesterday, Pulte advised me that they are proceeding with staking out the lot this week despite my request for additional time to consult with my lender and attorney. Consequently, I urge the City Council and Public Works not to approve these plans, changes, until I've had the opportunity to discuss any legal description changes of my property with my lender and negotiate further with the HOA regarding access. Pulte Homes should not be allowed to make changes that impair my access rights without my consent or without providing compensation for cleaning and other construction-related costs. Thank you.
Ms. Jasper?
Yes.
You are in luck today. Because in the room, we have our Development Services Director, Ms. Bowser, and if you walk to the back of the room, I am sure Ms. Bowser would walk over to you and give you her card and then maybe talk about that later on.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. I don't see any more cards. I don't see any more, oh, hold on. I don't see any more calls. So I'd like to close public comment, and I, staff is going to be pulling item number eight from the consent calendar, and Councilmember Andrews wanted to make a comment on item number six before, I believe, Councilmember Cyrep was going to come out with a major announcement. No, I'm kidding, but yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, I was interested in looking at number six just because basketball courts. I understand there's an agreement with HARD and with the city, and just wanted to see in the future we can look at basketball courts as possible public art opportunities. So just a comment, no questions, just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. And then Councilmember Roach had a comment on item number five.
Yeah, I just had a comment, and I'm really glad to see Ms. Morales is in the room. I just wanted to ask, so I don't oppose what the recommendation is from the committee, I'm just curious about sort of removing the homelessness portion of it, and I am just concerned because I think, you know, given, you know, to Roy Aguilar's comments, given recent directives from the governor, and, you know, a perceived increase of unhoused people in Hayward, I was hoping that committee was going to be able to address some of those needs, and so I'm just concerned, you know, maybe, you know, members of the committee will answer, or maybe Ms. Morales can sort of assure me that those items will still have a place to direct those besides having it come to the council as a whole. Thank you. I should have warned you.
Good evening. Yes, so it's our understanding, based on the state of emergency that was passed in January 2024, the intent was to accelerate all items related to homelessness so that it goes directly to the City Council. The Homelessness Housing Task Force meets quarterly, so it's not a very, really looking at what some of the constraints that it had in terms of the task force. One, we wanted the new committee to reduce some of the redundancies of hearing things multiple times at various bodies, but also being able to accelerate the urgent things, which we believe everything related to homelessness is an urgent topic, and ultimately, any policy would have to be approved by the City Council. So nothing would be resolved at the committee level. It still has to go to the council for authorization.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense. And yeah, and is that the understanding from the task force is what, you're comfortable with that? Okay.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, you know, also comment, you know, Councilmembers Cyrep and Councilmember Goldstein and I serve on that committee, and, you know, we have had discussions about what the committee would address. We did talk about scope of the work that we would address at the last committee meeting. One of the reasons why we're bumping it up to a council commission or a council committee is because, you know, these, the issues that you've included, we want to make sure are enveloped in the much broader housing policy development that we do. And, you know, I have to say, you know, Ms. Aguilar, while I appreciated her comments, you know, I think at the, at the last housing meeting, you know, I think one of the things we talked about was, you know, the city of Hayward has made significant, significant strides in both the producing housing and affordable housing and also in the area of responding to our unhoused population while simultaneously, you know, working with, doing cleanups while simultaneously connecting our unhoused population with services and resources. We have, you know, those who have been observing us and our work over the last two years, three years, have clearly seen our incredible investment in the HART program and in other, you know, just innovative programs that we've been delivering here in the city. So those conversations will continue to happen. Those policy recommendations will continue to come out of that committee. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, we will continue, and I know my colleagues on the committee, we will continue to lead this county when it comes to producing housing, preserving housing, and protecting tenants in the city of Hayward.
Thank you.
No doubt. Thank you.
That's all, thanks.
So, Councilmember Cyrep.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to close conversation on this specific item, I share your initial concern around, you know, homelessness issues not coming directly to this committee. My hope would be, you know, if we find ourselves not in a state of emergency, which would be a great place to be in, those kinds of topics could return to the Housing Committee. I also want to remind us that this is our committee. At the end of the day, if we want to increase the scope of this committee or refer specific items, we are fully empowered to do that, and I would welcome the council to do so. If there were specific things we felt like we wanted to bake with a smaller group before we bring it back to the full council. Really making this task force into a full committee is to preserve and protect the work that we're doing around housing and make sure that our residents know we have a consistent place where we're going to discuss new topics and move our city forward around this major issue. I also just wanted to ask our Deputy Director of Development Services, is that the correct title? I see that the rental registry is cued for 2025 for discussion. My hope would be that work is being done prior to that introduction before the council, is that, or before the committee, is that correct?
That's correct. So we would be leading up to the Homeless Housing Task Force, be doing the additional research we, based on the feedback we received the last time we brought it before the Homelessness Housing Task Force, so that we could address those questions, and then from there get direction on whether to propose it to the, to the full council.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, and I think that concludes my comments. With that, I'm happy to move all the action items except for, was it eight?
Eight.
Okay.
Moved by Councilmember Cyrep.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Roach. And if there are no objections, can we, will unanimously pass, correct? Yeah, wonderful, thank you. Next item is moving on to our work session, item number 17, Presentation of the City of Hayward User Fee Study. And I believe our mighty Finance Director, Ms. Gonzalez, will kick this off.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, we have an item before you. It's a work session on the city's comprehensive user fee study update. I am happy to introduce the item this evening, but then we'll turn it over to our consultant, who is online with us today. His name is Tony Thrasher with Willdown Financial Services. And so just wanted to give a little brief overview that the city is updating the comprehensive user fee study last updated in 2016, also completed at that time by Willdown Financial Services. And the city began working with Willdown in September of 2023 to get to a point where we could update the user fee as well as to meet with departments to review those fees and any proposed changes. And so that's what has been occurring over the last several months. The user fee will also look at cost recovery of the services that we provide and programs that we provide. And so our consultant will go over the methodology and how we have derived at the suggested fees that we have today. In addition to the report itself, it is a live model that we can adjust annually if we need to to reflect things like cost-of-living adjustments and things like that as well. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Tony Thrasher with Willdown Financial Services, who will take us through the presentation.
Great, thank you, Nicole. Hello, Mayor, Council. I am Tony Thrasher with Willdown Financial, the project manager for this study. Let's go ahead and dive right into the slides. So I'm going to start off with just kind of a little definition of what we're talking about, right? What are user fees? They are defined as services that are providing a private benefit with limited to no community benefit. So under state law, it is required that the use of the services be voluntary and that fees can only be set up to the reasonable full cost of the service being provided. Fees are adopted through City Council public hearing, and I also want to make sure that we highlight what they don't include in these sites, which is development impact fees, utility rates. Taxes are not included in this. This is purely operational cost-provided services. Okay, next slide, please. So there are two primary objectives within the fee, within a fee study. The first, we start off with determining the full cost of all services. That starts off with a review of the fee schedules, schedules with all your departments to identify any potential new fees, removal of obsolete fees, or adjustment to the fee structure to make sure that it fits to the way services are being provided today and moving forward in the future. And then we use fully burden hourly rates along with reasonable time estimates from staff to calculate a full cost recovery. When services aren't provided on a one-to-one basis, we'll use a program type, cost recovery type, where we identify a cost pool and divide it over user base to come up with a cost per unit. Then, once we know the full cost for all services and your updated schedule, we then talk about your cost recovery policy, right? So what are the cost recovery goals of the city? And then compare those full costs to your current fees to identify reasonable suggested fees, which we have in the report, so that you can identify exactly where you're going from, from a current fee, what the full cost of those services are, and then a suggested fee. The, want to make sure that when we're doing suggested fees, that we are making sure that we are identifying what that cost is so we're not going over it, so maintaining that legal compliance with state law. Make sure that we are not, you know, suggesting fees that would put yourself out of line with any policy goals or objectives you might want to have, and just make sure they're reasonable, right? Let's go ahead and go to the next slide and go through kind of the steps of everything. So we start off with model development with a data collection, right? So collecting expenditure data, staffing structures, identifying who works on fees, because we want to build up the fee model around all that kind of operational cost information so we can calculate the overhead for each department as well as a fully burden hourly rate for each position. Once we have that model ready to go, reviewed with finance, we then shift and meet with the individual departments so that we can go over their fee schedules and identify changes and modifications they might want to make. Once we have that fee schedule in place, we then start collecting time information, cost information on a service-by-service basis so we can get to a full cost for each service within your schedule. Only then do we shift into the next phase, which is then talking about comparing your current fee to the full cost and then identifying cost recovery targets for all your services. And then that kind of completes the, we'll say, the model, right? But as Nicole said, it's a living model, built in Excel, structured specifically to suit your city's needs, so it can be updated as an ongoing basis as often as you'd like. But once we have that model ready to go, we create a draft report around it. It's reviewed by staff. We make updates to it to finalize it, and then there's public and council engagement. So we're here for a study session, and then the ultimate goal is a public hearing to consider adoption. Next slide, yep. And so we also, so while this is a full cost analysis, it's always important to understand where you compare to your neighbors, right? Typically, you're looking to get full cost recovery for most of Typically, you're looking to get full cost recovery for most of your, especially development-type services. But even so, doing a comparison can provide that kind of information or, you know, clarity on where you're at compared to others to maybe highlight or, you know, trigger some alarm bears, alarm bells if something is off. So we did a sample comparison to make sure, to analyze your development-type fees of your building, engineering, and planning. We, the comparison cities we used were San Leandro, Fremont, Union City, Berkeley, San Mateo, and Milpitas. And we found is that both your current fees and the suggested fees that are in the report are either in line, so they're equal to or lower than the average of the comparison cities. So you would still be in line with them, while also collecting, you know, more of your full cost for your services. So we don't anticipate there to be any elasticity effect or drop in participation or use as a result. So that's a good thing, right, to make sure we have that kind of confirmation. Next slide please. And on the other side is, based off of those fee changes, right, and your activity levels as they currently are, we did a revenue kind of projection. It's primarily based off of the average fee change for each of the departments. So you can see, kind of listed there, based off of the average fee change in that middle column, there is the, a revenue kind of effect that would be projected based off of the current revenues. Next slide please. And I'm going to throw it over to Nicole so she can talk about one of the new fees, which is the credit card transaction fee. I just want to note, this fee we see in every city we work with nowadays, just because it is a substantial cost of well over $100,000 in costs that the cities are eating, just for the kind of the convenience factor of using credit cards. So I'll throw it over to you.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to spend a few minutes specifically on this fee. It is a new fee that we are proposing in the user fee this evening and really want to get some input from council on direction to move forward. The user fee study that you received as part of the packet, it did include a 4% credit card transaction fee on track, excuse me, on transactions over $250. We did do some research between when that was published and tonight. And we were looking at specifically at utility bills and what does that average utility bill looks like. The idea is that we want to minimize the impact on residents as well as small businesses by implementing this type of fee. And so the, you know, the range for a single-family residential utility bill for water sewer is anywhere from 200 to 300, with the average closer to 200. And so wanting to see if we can set those thresholds in a way that have the least amount of impact on our residents when they come in to pay their bills on a regular basis. So that was the thought process behind setting a threshold. You know, as mentioned by Tony, the credit card usage has increased significantly over the last couple of years. So as the increase in credit card usage, we do see an increase in the actual cost and surcharges that we are, we are receiving from our bank as well as the credit card companies such as Visa, Mastercard, American Express. And so just to provide quite, you know, a simple example of what a transaction might look like and what the cost of the 4% would be, if we had a transaction of $1,000, that 4% would equate to about $40, and that fee would be passed on to the actual customer, would be paid by the customer. Currently, the city is paying those fees. It, again, looking at where we were a couple of years ago versus where we are now, we have almost tripled the cost. We were around about $50,000 annually with development service specific over the last couple of years with the onset of our online permit system and again, just increased usage of credit cards. It has increased to 150,000. And so that's just for the transactions that occur within development services. We do have other transactions that occur in revenue for utility bills as well as some smaller non-development, non-utility type of revenue transactions that occur in the city. So wanting to just provide some context around this actual ask and also get some input and feedback from council on potential direction for the new credit card fee. And then I will turn it back over to Tony to round us out on this presentation.
Thank you, Nicole. So kind of a conclusion slide, right? These are operational costs, so I want to make sure to draw a line. These costs exist whether or not you're charging fees for them or not. So typically, they are impacting your general fund. So if you're not charging full cost for it, then it impacts your ability to do more community benefit types, type things. So general standard is individuals or groups that are receiving a private benefit, they pay 100% of the full cost. So I'm not paying for my neighbor's addition, things like that, right, through my tax dollars. But I've never worked with a city that doesn't have some level of subsidization, particularly within community services or recreation, things of that nature. And you have that too. But you, you know, subsidization can be an effective policy tool for encouraging participation, right? So I actually use the first and third one there, encouraging participation, promoting access to services. That is similar to those sort of community benefit type things, right? Ensuring compliance when cost is prohibitive, we don't see that within your development-type fee. So we don't see there being a risk with the suggested fees of people trying to skirt compliance any more than they would be today based off that. We do recommend an implementation of a new credit card transaction fee because it is a, it's continuing to grow, right? They're, the right sizing it to setting a limit or of the amount that transaction would apply to would help with it applying to your residents as opposed to, say, developers. So that is also a good recommendation that we would sign off as well. And we recommend that city utilize an annual inflator to make sure you're keeping up with your costs. You have the model, so you can update it with, say, MOU increases. But if you don't want to kind of go through that whole process, then CPI is the most often used, so that's always acceptable. And then we recommend a comprehensive analysis every five years. So that is the conclusion to my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions you have, as well as staff is also available as well.
Thank you. This is a work session, so what I want to do is let me open it for public comment first. And then, let me see, and then I'll come back up here in the days. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none in the chamber and seeing none online, so I will close public comment, and then I will go to councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Would you mind putting the policy consideration slide up on the screen, just so we know what we're discussing? Thank you. Overall, I'm supportive of this direction. I think this is a great way for us to demonstrate what it looks like for us to be smart with our revenue, generate revenue, especially in the face of some of the questions around the budget that we're facing. It's just getting more expensive to provide goods and services. And I think Hayward prides itself on being a very affordable place for folks to do business and transact. I think this is just us keeping up with the times and not in a way that's trying to squeeze anything out of anybody, but just making sure that we can cover our bases and continue to provide a high level of quality to our residents who we service. I do want us to be mindful of not discouraging development. I saw one of the biggest categories that we're raising fees in is in the building space. As we know, it's very difficult for folks to build right now. We're seeing a huge slowdown. We're seeing a lot of our partners in labor staying home because there's a lot less work than there was a few years ago. And so my ask would be from development services, maybe to work in tandem with the finance department just to monitor, you know, if the implementation of these fees leads to an even sharper decrease in development applications. And if not, then, you know, we're good to go. But I just want to make sure we're keeping a specific eye on that. I don't want things to slow down on that front. Overall, I'm supportive of the implementation of a new credit card fee. I think you chose the right number to make sure this isn't impacting our everyday residents, but really, you know, more so serving as a fee for those larger transactions. I also think it will have the added benefit of incentivizing folks to pay on time because if their bill grows larger, then they're going to face a credit card fee. And, you know, maybe there's a way we can communicate that to incentivize more on-time payments, and maybe that's an additional benefit to the city. I think building this in so we don't have to keep revisiting it by having an inflation factor, maybe based on CPI. I'm not sure what that number is. I'm interested in that. I'd like to see, you know, what that number is. Do you have a recommendation so far around CPI or percentage of CPI, Dr. Gonzalez?
I think I would ask Tony to reflect on that, just from an industry standard perspective, on kind of what we're seeing from our neighboring jurisdictions, if it's something that they're using as a CPI or if they're looking to use closer to mirroring known factors of MOUs.
Great. Yeah, Tony, what would you have to say about what other cities are doing?
Sure. So I'd say a lot of cities have multiple MOUs and labor groups that are having to kind of work with. And so it can often be hard to kind of identify a specific percentage to come up with. But if you can, then that is good to use. Alternatively, you could just update the personnel cost within the model. It'll update your full cost and go from there. It can result in additional staff time to do that sort of update. So that's why most would use a CPI, just because it's typically a more measured increase, you know, COVID years barring. But it is typically a more measured, you know, measure, use that word twice, increase in cost over the years. So it helps you keep up without it being a high factor, so that when you go to do your next study, it's less of a jump.
Okay, great. Thank you. So just, I guess, to close out my direction here, if we were to look at raising this within, you know, inflation measurement, I would want it to be something along the lines of, you know, 3% or CPI, whichever is lower, some kind of metric like that. Because as we've seen over the last few years, the CPI has been all over the place. And so I don't want folks to get hit with an unexpectedly large increase in fees if we were to go that route. So maybe drafting up something along those lines to bring forwards, so we don't have to revisit this every year, go too much in detail every year. And then the last thing I would say, as far as those policy recommendations are concerned, is I agree with an analysis being done every five years. Given the revenue this is going to generate for our general fund, I think it's important that we stay on top of the cost of goods and services. So thank you for all the work that went into this, Director Gonzalez, and to your team. And thank you, Tony, for helping conduct this report for our benefit.
Thank you. Councilmember Roach.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think it's fiscal responsible for us to sort of keep up with the fee increase so that, you know, individuals are paying, you know, the cost of the fee. The credit card one, you know, it's funny, I recently had a transaction, and I was shocked to get this new fee sort of attached to it that I'd never seen before. And it was significant. It added, you know, a chunk to the bill. And so, so my question is on that, don't most of our transactions happen by credit card? Because I guess what I'm wondering is, in this world of, you know, technology in general, this is how everybody pays anyway. And so there's just, and I realize we have to pay the fee to the bank, so I get that this is a reality that we're dealing with. And I guess the alternative is to ask people to come in with a check or debit card. I mean, what, is it just the credit card fee, or is it if they do debit or wire transfer or check, they're not paying?
Sorry. There are some fees associated when you use an e-check or if you use a debit card. They're not as significant as when you're using a credit card, because we're paying essentially bank as well as credit card fees. But essentially, yes, any time of electronic payment, there is a fee.
There's a fee. But people could walk in with cash or a check.
That is correct.
We do have a bunch of different payment, sorry, fee-free payment options. Folks can utilize both online and coming into our counters. Certainly, you know, I think, yes, we do, the majority of our transactions are likely credit card. I mean, that is the way, the world that we live in today. But I think we will do is, I don't have the analysis in front of me, so I won't make a, I won't plant my flag in this statement, but I would venture to guess that the majority of our, our credit card transactions are $100 or less. And so, a lot of those, we're not, we're not going to be applying a fee.
Okay.
It's the larger fees. We're, you know, setting it at a, whether it's 250 or, you know, some arbitrary number where we are below the average utility bill, that sort of thing, to try to avoid, you know, hitting folks that are just trying to, just trying to get by and pay their daily bills is something we're not trying to, you know, we're trying to operate without doing so.
Yeah, you know, I guess when, in the transaction that I had, I think I would have understood if it was just part of doing business, you know? That's just part of the fee. But you, but you could potentially get a credit or, if you didn't pay that. I don't know. It's just a perception. But, but yeah, thank you for the point that most of these transactions are going to be under, you know, under that amount. So I understand it. And then thank you also for the comparison cities. I always like to see that, that our current fees are either below or comparable to neighboring cities, so that's really helpful. And let's see, I think, I think that's all I had for now on this. And thank you for all that. I mean, I think at a time where everyone's being hit, I just, like, there was just a social media post about water bills in Hayward. And so I think everybody is being, you know, hit with pretty significant increases all over for all of the different fees that we pay in a household. And so, so, you know, whatever we can do to keep these at a minimum while, while still recuperating the cost that we need to pay is understandable. So thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Wanted to see if it was possible that we can have some communication or some reminders of how residents can avoid paying fees if, in showing the alternatives for payments for different transactions, if that's something that can be done.
Sure. I mean, I think on our website, we have a bunch of the fee-free payment options listed. We can always do more to, I mean, we can work with our community media relations group to get some information out, just sort of FYIs to the community.
Maybe in the water bill inserts, if they still get paper water bill, something like that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Then also wanted to know if we could also talk about the fee decreases, because I saw some in the presentation and in the packet, and wanted to know what was the thought process on some of the decreases, and maybe we can highlight that for the community that that is actually happening.
Yeah. So, and I'll let, Tony actually did the analysis on it, but I'll provide some high level and let him provide a little bit more detail. There's a lot that goes into the cost of the analysis of the fee, so it's not just what is the cost of the employee or the person processing, like for a permit example, but also what is the time it takes, right? There are several factors that go into that. And so this was done, obviously, last time in 2016. And so some of the processes may have become more efficient, so it's less time to spend on that. There might be an increase in the subsidy of it this time. So if you do have a specific one that we want to look at, we can do that as well. But I will let Tony provide a little bit more detail on what causes a fee to be reduced over time.
Yeah, certainly. So most typically, if we're seeing fee decreases, it's due to a change in the process or because a specific fee is no longer, you know, covering a certain task. Often you'll see a fee decrease because a specific function or process is now being covered under something else. The other part, of course, is technology, right? So when technology gets involved, it tends to make processes more efficient as well. So all those sort of things. We don't have a lot of fee decreases within the study, but those that are in there are typically, I'd have to look to, and we can kind of come back on, say, the public hearing and let you know exactly which ones those are, what the purposes are, the reasons behind them. But I believe many of those are probably due to a deviation of the services and how they're being provided. There's other fees that are taking on those tasks, so it's kind of just splitting it off. So if you think of it as, if I am a resident getting a specific type of fee request, but maybe commercial could also fall under that, splitting it up in between, like, say, a residential or commercial allows for it, a commercial will take on the higher cost that is involved with their service, while the resident can get the lower fee based off there. So that, things like that.
And then I also noticed that there were some fees related to facilities where they actually stayed the same, and some had minor increases, and wanted to know the thought process behind that as well.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the facilities rental fees have gone before council during recent master fee updates. And so we obviously took a look at those fees, worked with the departments on what was appropriate, again, wanting to be in line with making it feasible for our community to use our spaces. And so based on the current rates, it fit within the user fees and cost recovery. And so we decided to leave the rates as is, again, trying to make them, the rooms and the spaces that we have in the city affordable and usable by our community members.
And then there's also discounts for residents versus other entities.
There is a tier of rating based on residents, non-residents, and business uses and nonprofit uses as well.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, their menu.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tony and Nicole, for a good report. My only question really is, how do these fees compare with other municipalities? Are we right in the middle or high, low?
Again, I'll speak in generality of it. We did survey a number of cities, including some of them that are very near to us, like the city of San Leandro, Fremont, Berkeley. We are within the same range, so to speak, that we have some fees that are more expensive maybe than the city of San Leandro, but within a reasonable range, that we're not so far out of industry standard that it causes for concern. If it was, I think that we would then propose some type of subsidy to consider for council so that we are not significantly out of line with what we're seeing in neighboring jurisdictions.
Okay. Colleagues, colleague Cyrop's point was a good one in the sense that we don't want to dissuade anyone from coming to Hayward because of our fees. I did notice one particular fee went up 1% and another one up to 96%, so that's the reason I brought up the question. So I do believe that So I, I, I do believe that cost recovery is important, not just for us, but for every city, any municipality. I like the fact that we do have programs for discounts for our residents, that's very, very important. And I made the mistake of paying for my espresso with my Visa card, and it was 25 extra cents. So, yes, make sure that we do get, recover that cost of that credit card. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. First, I would like to point out, the pronunciation of my name is Goldstein, and if Ms. Aguilar is still watching online. But thank you for thinking of us. So, good report. I am in favor of doing these various fee adjustments. It is wise for us to be considering income, but also, as my colleagues have demonstrated, we also want to be compassionate with our residents. The 4% credit card fee, I don't object to that, as long as we continue to provide alternative payment methods. However, I wouldn't want us to also be incurring labor costs, like handling paper checks or paper money. I think the efficiency of having it done electronically just makes sense on both ends, so just want us to be mindful of that. I agree with Councilmember Cyrup's position about the cost adjustments being the lower of those two metrics, so I'd like to see that happen. And otherwise, I think this is, you know, good and responsible measures to take, and very appropriate to look at this again in five years. Thank you.
Thank you. I, since you asked us to comment, I'll comment on the, on the credit card fee. You know, I guess, I guess I was trying to, I guess what I want to say is, can we promote the fact that we're waiving a lot of these fees? Like, you know, when, you know, on the receipt or something, say, you know, the city of Hayward has waived the fee, or, or, you know, come up with some, you know, language that people see that, you know, that nobody likes to pay, you know, something at the city, I get it. But, you know, but it, it makes the payment a little palatable, if, if you say, you know, service charge is covered by the city of Hayward, you know. At least it, it gives them, you know, a little bit of, it gives us a little press, right? Positive PR. And that would be the one thing. And the other thing I was going to ask is, is there a difference between someone paying with a credit card versus somebody paying with a debit card, or is it the same fee, the, a fee is a fee is a fee?
My understanding, it's, it's a card process fee.
Yeah, exactly.
So it doesn't matter necessarily whether it's a debit card or a credit card.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and, you know, I, over the years, you know, I have seen, you know, there are some differences in the report, but there are some similarities. I mean, you know, over the years, we've, we have been assuming a lot of these fees, and, because, you know, we've been committed to keeping the city affordable, and, you know, and, and up here, you know, over the years, we've also had very spirited discussions about, you know, development services fees, and building fees, and, you know, water hookup fees, and, you know, so we, it's a conversation that we've always had over the years, it's a conversation that, you know, we try to calibrate, you know, along the way. And so, you know, I think, given, you know, the slide of the comparisons, you know, we're still right where we need to be. And, you know, I think, you know, we're still, people are still getting a deal, I guess, when they, you know, do business in Hayward. So anyways, okay, I appreciate it. Do you have everything that you need in terms of our responses, and sort of guideposts on where we're going?
I think we do, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And being, being a kid from the 1980s, having a last name like Thrasher is pretty cool, I'm just saying. But I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Thrasher, for, for your report.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Okay. Next item is item number 18, which is special events, provide feedback on updates to special events permitting and grant processes and priorities for marquee events. And this is going to be a report from our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Regina Youngblood.
I'm just going to introduce the item and turn it over to our new Neighborhood Services Manager, Zach Abadi. We've done a lot of work on trying to streamline the process of special events, making sure that we're handling them consistently. We're looking for some direction from you on marquee events and a couple of other items. So I'll turn it over to Zach.
And I believe this is, Mr. Abadi is making his city council debut. Wow. Welcome, Mr. Abadi.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, let me start with a little background on the program, and what brings us here this evening. For the fiscal year 2025, the special events grant application process has moved to the Community and Media Relations Division in the City Manager's Office. These grants allow nonprofit organizations to apply for city funds and permits to organize events independently. Earlier this year, our team went through a lean innovation workshop, during which we spoke with mayor, council, community members, and multiple departments throughout the organization, to learn about challenges facing special events in our city. Based on what we heard, we streamlined the process and developed a customized, rather than one-size-fits-all service model, that will make the process easier for applicants and cross-departmental city staff. This evening, I will walk you through the program's improvements and seek feedback, sorry, on changes and prioritization of events and event funding. So, as part of the program's update, we've created an interactive website that provides easily accessible public information about permitting, grant funding, and promotion. Show you guys how this looks. We also created an event planning guide, which is a tool that explains the roles of the event organizer and the city staff. This planning guide includes a checklist for applicants to follow to ensure a well-planned, safe, and fun event. These steps include, one, checking with the Hayward, with the city of Hayward's event calendar to ensure their desired date is free from other planned events in the city. We've had countless times where we have competing events going on within the city, so now this is a process for us to vet this. Number two is to complete and submit the special events application. Three, apply for special events grant funding, if applicable. And four, work with the Community Relations Division staff to complete additional licenses, permits, and documentation required for the event. This is where the new customized or concierge approach comes into play. CMR staff will help applicants navigate the documents needed to hold an event. These may include temporary ABC permits, city of Hayward business licenses, food-related permits with the county, liability insurances, and site maps. Attachment three of this report lists these requirements in more detail. We've also streamlined the grant application process by creating a fast, first-come, first-served program. Applicants will be reviewed as they are received, allowing organizers to apply throughout the year, rather than needing to plan 12 or more months in advance. The CMR Division will review all grant applications based on eligibility, request level, and the event's ability to enrich our city's cultural, social, and economic vitality. Also, for the first time, we will implement a post-event evaluation. This process is designed to measure the event's success based on the community and staff feedback, and ensure the city's funded events benefit the community. This table shows the funding tiers for our grant program. Tier one, which is our largest monetary amount, is for large events, requiring multiple street or plaza closures with attendance of 500-plus people. Tier two is a lower impact, for surrounding community. This may include single-street closure or attendance less than 500. Tier three is intended for off-site venues, like here at City Hall and the Rotunda, which has limited capacity due to building restraints. And lastly, tier four is for unique events such as parades, races, and neighborhood street, street parties, involving full or partial street closures. Since the, since we now allow organizations to apply for grants year-round, if funds are available, we'll have a set guidelines for how far in advance an applicant must start the process. Also, in prior years, staff did not have the, had a consistent rule for which fees that city would waive. For transparency and equity, staff is recommending that the city waive the special event permit fee for all events that receive city funding, so they do not need to use the grant funds towards this cost. As of today, that adds an additional $2,944 value to each tier level. Now I'd like to transition to the special events budget. For fiscal year 2025, the special events funding budget is $100,000 for the Community and Media Relations Division, and $30,000 to cover overtime costs for Main and Services Department. This budget covers community grant and city-produced and sponsored marquee events. For definition, a marquee event are high-profile signature events produced and funded entirely or partially by the city of Hayward. These events do not need to apply for special event funding and come with a higher level of staff involvement. These events have historically been the Light of the Season, the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration, and the Heart of Hayward Volunteer Recognition Event. In fiscal year 2024, the city spent $156,208 on special events, and the Main and Services Division spent $52,488 in overtime to support these events. The additional funding primarily came from salary savings. The amounts spent fell into four categories. $81,708 on grants from community-sponsored events, $59,500 on three marquee events, $15,000 one-time council appropriation for Juneteenth celebration, a community-run event with significant staff, staff support, and, once again, $52,468 in overtime for MSD staff. This chart above lists the breakdown of funding for spending in fiscal year 2024, which is also attention number two in your, in your packet. As I mentioned in the previous slide, the city overspent the special events budget for fiscal year 2024. To stay within budget and staff capacity, staff is seeking direction from council on priorities for fiscal year 2025. Specifically, staff is seeking feedback on which criteria or division should use, or division, our, our division should use to rank events for grants when funding is limited, in which marquee events are the highest priority. For fiscal year 2025, the Community Relations Division can commit 0.8 full-time employees to these activities, which is approximately 1,600 hours. This is roughly equates to running four marquee events and administering 10 annual special event grants. This is possible because the City Manager's Office also assigned the Management Fellow to assist with the event-related tasks. Without the Management Fellow, our staff capacity would be lower. Finally, several marquee events are not ran by our department, CMR. While these events are not subject to the conversation, I do want to point these out just as reference for council. They're well-attended and important to our committee. They include the National Night Out, Airport Open House, Trunk or Treat, and Citywide Cleanup Event. So in summary, staff seeking council feedback on the following three items at this work session. One, changes made to streamline the process. Two, the criteria for decisions on which events to support first, given limited resources, and which marquee events are your highest priority, given the limited staff capacity. That concludes mine, so I'll open for questions. Oh, I am so sorry. Next slide. Now, open up questions.
Well, thank you, and, Mr. City Manager, if, if tomorrow you can tell Mr. Abadi that he did a great job.
I'll let him know.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, this is a, a work session, yes. So I will open it up for public comment first. And, let's see, there is nobody online, and so I'd like to, and nobody in here, so I'd like to close public comment. And let me see, the person who knows nothing about public events, Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for doing this presentation and starting this process. This is something that we've been asking for, for so long, and we did, we did a referral, and you all made it happen, so I'm very excited. But I know Councilmember Emmanuel has waited way longer than I have, so want to give him kudos for all the community events that he does, as well as Councilmember Cyrup, and all the, everyone else who does events on the day. I wanted to just make sure the community knows that the fees that were shown, or the funding that were shown here, some of those events actually cost way more than that. This is just a contribution from the city towards those events. Just, I just want to clarify that. So when you see Cinco de Mayo is only receiving a few thousand, they're getting a lot of other sponsors to make that event happen. So just want to make that clear, it's not apples to apples. I also want to thank my colleagues for supporting Juneteenth as a celebration. And I do want to encourage us to continue looking at that as a marquee event. Now, the community is expecting that event, and a lot of people, there's been, there's been confusion on who's actually running the event. And we would like to clarify that, but also bring it up to the standard that the city would do an event for. And so, we will, I, I would encourage the city to, to take ownership of that as much as possible with our community partners. So I would advocate for that. Also, wanted to remind people that when they hear these, these numbers, it sounds, you hear six figures to put on events for the community. But these, these events, they stimulate the economy. People actually come to our town, and they come partake in the restaurants, they, they visit other facilities. It helps reduce calls of service if these spaces are activated. So it is a community benefit to have these events. So just wanted to also remind us of that. But the, the main thing that is really important to me, more than receiving a grant, is just the business, or the concierge service, similar to what the business concierge service has, is just having that one point of contact, or just the few people you know working on that event will save so much time. A lot of the people who are putting on these events are doing it out of the kindness of their hearts. They don't go to school to do event planning, but they want to do something for the community, so they need a lot of guidance, they need a lot of hand-holding. And people like me, we do have full-time jobs, and so we, we, we want to do this for the community, but we only have so, so many hours to try to figure this out. So having this website, having this checklist is super helpful, and having that one point of contact is, 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 is just priceless for me if we can have that. I also want to acknowledge the, the different departments that are going to be involved in this, and I know it's been extremely stressful for you all, but I'm hoping that this will help. But just want to give a shout-out to Hayward PD, Development Services, all these folks that are partaking and getting permits, helping us get permits, figuring out how to work with other public agencies to get the permits. That takes a lot of time on staff, and I'm hoping that this process will help you all as well. So I want to say that. And then, I just, I do have one question on, on fees. We just had a user fee study, and this is all also going to coincide with some of the rentals that we have. So this, all this will be updated, right, when, when the user fee study is passed, and we know what fees are, all that will be updated, right?
That's correct. So one of the attachments in the, in the report gave you the current today fees for renting facilities within Hayward. As soon as the new fees are adopted, of course, it'll be updated, and the website will be updated. So, yeah.
And then how would the, the grant amounts work with the CSC recommendations with the tier system?
So now, the, what you're actually referring to is the past version of it. So last fiscal year, that's how they, the program ran. Now we're actually moving into our division, and it's going to be year-round. So one of the things we did learn from that is, even though they did a great job trying to implement it, it was very hard for the individuals trying to plan for an event. So for example, you had to have everything submitted, very beginning, going through. Now, if somebody comes up with a great idea, midway through the year, unfortunately, they come to us and say, well, unfortunately, you have to come back next year in June to apply again. So now that's why this, the new process we're providing is going to eliminate that for them.
Yep.
The only limitations we will have is funding, unfortunately.
Yep. And I just, the reason why I wanted to say that, I know there might be some folks that might have heartburn about this change, but this is actually going to provide predictability for those applying. So it's actually a good thing. If they know exactly how much they're going to get versus guessing and applying, and it's taking all this time, and they don't know how much they're going to get, that actually causes more frustration. So they know, oh, I know I'm going to get this amount from the city of Hayward, I know I need to go fundraise somewhere else. So I think it's actually going to be super helpful. And then, I was, the, the last question I have, was the chamber, I'm assuming is okay with taking on Light Up the Season, if this is something that you all, or, maybe I shouldn't assume, but this is a discussion. assume, but this is a discussion that's happening.
Yeah, I could actually speak to that. So some of the costs around the marquee events, you'll notice over the years, it actually have increased. Basically, the reason, one of the reasons why that happened was, after the pandemic, we actually took out a lot of the majority of the backend of running the event itself. Now that they have new leadership, I've actually sat down with her, we've now started a conversation of trying to transition, be more of a team for the approach moving forward, that will actually also help with some of the costs. So just for example, pre-pandemic, we were looking at around $20,000 for the event. Last year, we spent closely to $41,000. Now, hopefully with that partnership and getting more sponsors with Chamber, that'll bring the cost down. And as we bring the cost down for the special event marquee events, that just gives us more money that we can go out to the public for grants for other grantees.
Okay, and I can talk about this all day, so I'll spare my colleagues, but the only thing I would say is, if we can, if you can, if you can't, I understand, but maybe some estimate durations for permits and contact info with the other agencies on the list, and maybe that's something you can do later on.
So actually on the website, I didn't want to get into too detailed, bogged down, but if you go onto the website itself, we actually have pull-downs.
Okay.
And it gives more information. All the, all the one-offs, we talked about like ABC permits, we get in much more detail on the website. And then, we're not also, not going to rely on just the website itself, we're here, the part of the concierge person of it is us actually talking through and helping them.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, I also wanted to, you know, to say, Councilmember Andrews has really been at the front of this. She's been working on this. I know when she first got on here on the council, I know she was pulling her hair out on, you know, "How does this get done? Where do I go for that? And how come it takes so long? And how do we know?" And all this, and so I wanted to thank you for really, you know, being the, sort of the face on this.
I won't say it never takes so long. I was always grateful for staff support.
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think our, you know, Director of Development Services, I think she got a couple of gray hairs because of you, but I won't say, I won't say, but thank you very much. Councilmember Emenyo.
Thank you, Mayor. You did a good job this morning, I mean, today. A very good presentation, first presentation. I have three things. One is, this is very good. I really like it. I like the post-evaluation, I like the criteria, I like the application process, I like the timeline, I like the differentiation of where the money goes, et cetera. That's excellent, and I'm glad that this is happening, and we're finally able to do it, so very good. Two quick questions. It mentions that there may be outside organizations who may apply for grants or receive grants. Did I misread that? And what does it really mean? I want to keep this money in Hayward.
So when we say outside, we're saying outside the City of Hayward, outside this, us as a city agency, I should say. So nonprofits within the City of Hayward are applying for it. So the verbiage meant that outside of our building itself.
City Hall. Okay, outside of City Hall, not outside of the City of Hayward.
That's correct.
So that's clarification, I want to keep it in.
Now, one thing that we can say is, if you want priority, there are nonprofits outside of the City of Hayward that could obviously apply for a grant. Based on council's recommendation, we could always have a priority for nonprofits within Hayward. And I don't know historically how many outside have even applied, but in theory, someone outside could apply.
All right, as long as it's an organization that serves the majority of Hayward residents. Okay, okay, that's good. My second question is, if we have, on the tier system, all right, and we give somebody a grant, our logo must be on that, any publicity that these folks do?
So the way the logos works is, we actually use logo for marquee events and for sponsored, city-sponsored events. By receiving a grant, it actually doesn't entail that there's, it's a sponsored event. It's actually just us giving grant to help offset some of the cost. So they would, in theory, they actually will not be using the logo itself. Logo will be reserved for city-sponsored events and marquee events.
Uh huh, uh huh. Okay, and back, it's my third item, back about 40 years ago, when I started becoming involved with the Cinco de Mayo Festival, I was told by a friend, "Why don't you apply to the city? Maybe they can give you some money." So I did, we got $500, something like 40 years ago. The process was somewhat complicated, somewhat cumbersome, and I kept that a year after year after year, year after year. So I'm glad this is something different. So with that in mind, next year, the Cinco de Mayo is going to have its 40th celebration, and we bring people downtown, close to 7,000 folks. We've never had any problems. Well, we did have one drunk one time, but he was okay, I managed to handle him, except from that. So I invite my colleagues to consider having the Cinco de Mayo be the fourth marquee event. I think it's time that we have and we graduated to a marquee event. So that is my recommendation to my colleagues and to city staff to consider that strongly. I think it looks like there are funds for that particular one, and I think it's time that we do this. So, thank you, and thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Hold on, I think it was Councilmember Roach.
Thank you, yeah. To answer your first question, I think the streamlining on the events is awesome. I know everyone's been wanting it up here, so, so thank you for that. I'm wondering, how will this also work with the People's Budget items? Because I am concerned about staff overtime, you know, because I think the People's Budget events are great, but I think they probably took a lot more staff time than we envisioned when we, when this project came up. And so how, I mean, it sounds like you're already, that you're already overstaffed, there isn't really enough staff to do what you're proposing to do on top of the People's Budget item, so I'm wondering how this is all going to work, and how we're going to manage that.
Sure, well, actually, so the People's Budget is a separate entity. This, tonight, we're only presenting just special events portion of it. And you are correct, we are very, if, if our Management Fellow was to leave us, we would lose a lot of staff side for that. When it comes to People's Budget, I think I believe later on, that's something the council is going to have to look at, and I can actually, if you want, defer to City Manager, if you want to speak about that, but that's completely separate from this actual presentation.
Okay, so that's not included? So that will consider, that will continue on its own process, and this will be, okay.
And I think, you know, having been through it once now, we've definitely learned some lessons, and I think that we can set some expectations with the community partners that we end up engaging with, if we are to do the People's Budget again, and sort of know what we're getting ourselves into, and how to reduce the high volumes of staff time for, you know, sort of lower benefit things, and that mention of lower benefit isn't, isn't directed towards a specific project. It's more of, you know, we put a lot of staff time into something that was very, very, you know, a simple contract, took much longer than we would have expected in some cases. And so I think it's being able to, to use our newly earned expertise. And then also, you know, working with groups to vet a little bit more on the front end to make sure that we know what we're getting ourselves into on the, on the way.
Thanks, and I mean, I ask obviously, because it's the same people that are doing, that are staffing these events and are staffing that, right? I mean, so they can only be spread so thin. Okay, so it sounds like that will be a sort of continued. And then on, what was the criteria for deciding, you know, which should be a marquee event? Was it numbers attended? Was it amount given out? I mean, I'm wondering how we came to this conclusion, because I think there are some events that are really well-attended, others that are not so, but they're still really important to the community, and so what's, wondering how that happened.
So the city-sponsored events that they don't listed, those have historically been with the city way before my time. I know, for example, like Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Celebration, that originally in 1984, and we've just continually gone throughout the years. For the Hearts of Hayward, similar, that started when Gail Steele was here back in the 80s as well. One thing about the Hearts of Hayward is, if you notice, size-wise, this has scaled down, but it's also because of the venue we have. When it first started, we were in Centennial Hall, hundreds of people could show up. Then unfortunately, that building went away, we then transferred, and then when I say "we" is before my time as well, it was transferred to the big white tent. With the white tent going away, we have now have to have the event here in City Hall, so that's why the size has gone down. I know the committee who's around planning of it, we are looking at hopefully moving it somewhere, once, like, for example, Stack Center opens, then we can try to increase our capacity. But as for the three marquee events, we have somewhat inherited those, so they've been around for quite a bit of time.
Okay, and then, maybe I missed this, but who is the committee that decides who gets these awards?
So for the Hearts of Hayward, it's a community-based committee.
Not hearts, but I mean, in the process, so if you apply for a grant with the city.
I'm so sorry, I apologize. That's actually internal staff team, so CMR Division, with helps of other divisions as well.
Okay, okay, and then the question about removing the fee, you know, the suggestion to remove the fee if they're getting city funding. So what if it's like a $50,000 event, and they're getting a $1,000 award? And then you said the equivalent is about $2,900 to remove the fee. So I guess I'm just wondering if it makes sense in every situation, you know, because then are they just applying for the funding to get the fee removed, and so now it's like an inverted, you know, they get $1,000, but they're saving $1,900? And so just wondering how, you know, if there's some criteria there that we can, have it make sense.
The whole thought process, oh, sure, sure. The whole thought process behind waiving the fee is, most of the events are applying for the funds, they're, they're coming to us, once they receive the funds, they're always actually applying for a fee waiver in the first place. So we're trying to alleviate that work for staff, basically.
Okay.
And also, just the optics too, so at any, any tier levels, whether it be $2,500, $5,000, or $10,000, you know, we're handing them over funds to benefit the community for their event, yet we're then asking for those funds back to cover the fee.
Sure, okay.
By making it even playing ground, benefits everyone.
Okay, yeah, I think that's it. I mean, and as far as, you know, input on the marquee events, I don't know, I mean, it's hard, right? They all, they all have value. I mean, I think, you know, there's, we've been doing a lot of these events for a while, so, I don't know, I think I'll wait to hear from my colleagues on that. I mean, I understand the ones we inherited, I understand the proposal at Cinco de Mayo, so, all right, I'm going to wait on that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Zach, for the report. Similar to Councilmember Andrews, I've been excited for this for a very long time. I recently joined the, you know, Hall of Councilmembers that have put on very large events, and it is quite the undertaking, so I'm really appreciative of seeing, you know, the resources that we're making available to our community to help them put on better events. I'm going to walk through one, two, and three, and just share some of my thoughts here. As it relates to streamlining events, overall, I really like the improvements to this process. I like that we're waiving fees from an equity standpoint. A few points of feedback, I'm wondering if the event application form has something like a saved draft feature, given how long it is, or if we can allow folks to know how long it will take to complete. I was just, you know, looking through the attachment, and I could see somebody getting halfway through, stepping away, and then having to start over again, and that being frustrating. Also, from an equity or an accessibility standpoint, maybe there's a PDF version that folks can download and fill out and email to you, or print out and submit to the city directly, just making room for more folks of different abilities to be able to apply for events. I also want to make sure there's, at a minimum, a Spanish language option. Have we done that already for the form? And if not, making sure that we have a Spanish language option too. I have some issue with it being a first-come, first-served application process. I think it would be better if there were maybe two tranches, maybe like a winter and a summer tranche, so that way people have time to prepare to apply versus, you know, if we're trying to avoid everybody applying at the same time or a year in advance, I think that would happen again if it was first-come, first-served, where you would have a flood of applications when the funding became available again. So maybe finding a way to partition that out, so people have time to prepare, and staff also has time to not have to go through so many applications all at one time. I'm also hoping that we can make city discounts and resources available. I know we have an account with the Porta Potty Company. Maybe the city's able to offer or extend that to groups that are applying for grants, so that we can bring down the cost, or the need to create a separate account for something like that, or trash collection is maybe something we can support with, where they cover the cost, but we're able to help facilitate that. That was a huge boon to the South Hayward market. I don't know what that might look like for a community grant, but just what ways can we make ourselves valuable outside of staff time? What are other benefits folks get from applying for these grants? Like Councilmember Andrews had mentioned, this isn't going to cover the full cost, but I think there's a lot of benefit that the city can provide to help make these events more successful, and also, you know, reduce litter, and make sure people have a place that they can use the restroom, or whatever other resources we can provide. Criteria for deciding events, I agree with Councilmembers Emenyo, we should definitely prioritize groups that are coming from Hayward, these are Hayward events. It would, it would give me pause if there was a group that was coming from outside of Hayward, but as long as they're here to serve our residents, I don't want to, you know, discourage them. But I also want us to develop new leaders and new folks that are hosting in our city, and I want us to encourage that through these dollars. I'm not very happy with the idea of marquee events and community events competing over the same pool of funds. I think if we set these marquee events, or we decide on these marquee events, that should be funded by the city, and we should have a pool of money for the community, because if we decide to, let's say, add Juneteenth, which I'm supportive of, and the Latin Jazz Festival, then, you know, that leaves like 25 grand for however many events, and I think that goes against what we're trying to accomplish here, which is encouraging the community to put on more for themselves versus the city having to do everything. So if there's any way we can separate out those budgets, I'm hoping that we can look more into that. Most marquee events are happening downtown, maybe aside from National Night Out and the Airport Event, and I'm wondering how we can ensure South and West Hayward receive balanced attention. I'm interested in maybe if the Latin Jazz Festival is interested in participating in a different part of the city, or one of the other events, maybe the Trunk or Treat takes place at the Weeks Branch Library instead. Just want us to be mindful of how much we're spending on these events, and that we're, you know, sharing the love, or spreading the love out. My other comment on criteria is, I think the tiers are a little bit too low as they relate to attendance. I think tier one should maybe be 1,000 or more instead of 500 or more. 500 for tier one, it means we're spending $20 per person, which seems quite high for me. I know there's a return on investment for stimulating the local economy, but I also think that if you're applying for that much money from a very limited pool, you should be driving a larger audience. And then, of course, there's always other sponsors that folks can seek out to pursue that funding, and maybe that's another point of feedback for the website or the page that you made, which is great. What are some other community partners in the area that are open to sponsoring community events, so that people know, okay, I can come to the city not just for funding and some technical advice, but they're also showing me other players in the space that might be interested in sponsoring my community event? And then, last note on the website while I'm talking about it, is making sure that the homepage, it's easy to find this event page that you created from the homepage. I'm finding there's starting to be a discrepancy between new webpages we're building and how easy it is to find from the homepage, and so that might be somewhere within the City Manager's Office or the Community Relations Division to figure out, making sure the things that are new that we're building on the website are easily accessible from the top level of our website. And then, the last question here, which marquee events are highest priority given the limited staff capacity? I am supportive of Juneteenth, I think that would round out us having a May, June, August, September, and October event, so we're, you know, really filling up the spring and summer. I'm open to hearing more about the Latin Jazz Festival, I'd want to understand what the pricing is around it, and I would be more supportive if we had a dedicated budget for marquee events. If we could set aside that funding, I'd feel more comfortable seeing what that full cost would look like, and then, you know, just making sure we have a pot of money specifically for the community, because that's what the CSC was for, and now it seems like residents will be getting less as a result, which is, I think, not our intention, so any way we can separate those two budgets, I'm in supportive. Those are my comments. Thank you again for this presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I like what you did with the website, but yeah, finding things on our web, on our, on our site is a little troubling sometimes, especially with new pages, so if you can figure something out there. But I do like it, and the information seems clear and well-presented there, in terms of what the expectations are. I very much like the streamlined intake form. You know, the biggest complaint that I heard from people that were applying through CSC funding was how complicated it was, especially for the smaller organizations that are really trying to do something good and novel for the community, and so what you've done here, I think, is really stellar. It gives, kind of levels the playing field, and gives people a good opportunity. And likewise, with the concierge support during the permitting, you know, that can be, wow, that's, that's like such a huge obstacle for many people, I can see why that might keep them away, so this is great. You're just opening the doors and saying, "Hey, look, we're going to help you with this," and that's fantastic. I have some concerns about the first-come, first-served application process, but Councilmember Cyrop mentioned, possibly having two tranches might be a way to deal with that, or maybe potentially based on the time of year, and so I'm not really sure exactly how I would address that, but making sure that, you know, different organizations are represented. I like his idea of splitting off the marquee budget. I mean, we're going to do those events, right? It's not really a question, so I would strongly suggest setting that off, and then making application for, for the, for the other events. I don't know if I'm being very clear on that, but I think you know what I mean. And the, the funding tiers seem to be pretty clear. I'm not so sure about the deadlines, so I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. Looking through the report, and I still didn't really understand about when deadlines had to be met there. Did I, did I miss that part?
So if you look up, right here we have, so the large tier one's 120 days in advance, just because we know the planning-wise, it's going to take a lot more for permits, all the way down to 45 days for tier two, I'm sorry, tier three. And then the question, the reason why tier four, even though it's a lower threshold monetary amount, the day prior, because of, for example, if somebody's putting a race, amount, the day prior because of, for example, if someone's putting a race, or we're gonna be shutting down streets, again, we want to get as much time in advance to let staff know.
Oh, yes, very good. Thank you for reminding me of that, because I, I think really what's, what you're really saying there about the, the time is not knowing in advance what they're asking for, right? And so if it's a parade, it's gonna have a completely different set of requirements than if they want to do an event here at City Hall. And so I, I would say breaking those, those timeframes up in terms of what resources they're gonna need to put the event on. Am I making sense?
No, you aren't. You're making sense. I understand.
Okay, all right. Yeah, 'cause that, 'cause I don't think a hundred and twenty days for, it's not unreasonable for, for a small event provider, but, you know, I work with a couple of, of smaller organizations that have planned events, and they were maybe sixty days out, and so at the tier level that you're talking about, they would have been knocked out of competition. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say, good work on this, and I know as we roll this out, it will bring a lot more equity to the, to, you know, all the organizations that are applying for money, you know, so, which, which is a good thing. And I know over the years, you know, if you look at, you know, just take the, the Cinco de Mayo, the La Lianza event, I mean, rain or shine, I've been at that event for the last, I don't know how many years it's been going on, I've been a long time, but, you know, rain or shine, that event turns out, you know, thousands of people. And, and I'm always surprised that it's always, you know, gotten three thousand dollars, and, you know, and so, then I've seen other events that have gotten, you know, ten thousand dollars, and there's only been fifty people there. And so, so I'm gonna, so this is good. I appreciate you guys doing this, and, and I know your team worked really hard on this. And I just wanted to thank, of course, Councilmember Andrews for her work on this, and, and we'll look forward to the success. Yeah, Councilmember Roach.
Thanks. You know, just to get back to your question about which marquee event, so, so, so you're thinking right now, the Martin Luther King one is already one, we're doing the Hearts of Hayward, you're thinking Light Up the Season potentially could be a partnership with, with the Chamber. So, so what other ones are we really considering for marquee events? And is that, are you looking for that specific direction tonight? So, are we looking at Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, and Latin Jazz? Are those really the only other ones? Because I'm, I'm thinking of like the Hawaiian May Day event, that's a huge event, a huge, you know, economic generator, I think, but that, that's not something, right? Because that's organized by its own organization. So which events are you still thinking could be potentially added to the marquee events?
So it's really your direction? We're looking for, for council's direction on that? We, for funding-wise, Juneteenth was the last one they got funding for, in that aspect of it, but again, I need your guidance of what, what marquee events you want to see in the city.
And then, are you considering, I mean, because, you know, we're saying Light Up the Season, but are you considering maybe that's not a marquee event anymore, because that might, there might be an outside partnership with that one? Or, or will that one stay a marquee event?
Funding-wise, I would probably still stay a marquee event, even if we have-
Okay, so there's just one more?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, so really, we're looking at Cinco de Mayo or Latin Jazz Festival? Is that, is that what I'm, well, sorry, among my colleagues, maybe I should say that. And are you looking for that specific direction tonight?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I mean, so I guess we, we haven't really weighed in on that. Is that right?
So, let me, okay, okay, so let me pause you-
Yes, please.
Right there, Councilmember Roach.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Andrews.
I was just gonna say, I'm willing to revisit the Juneteenth funding, because we do get additional sponsors if it allows for both Cinco and Latin Jazz, if, just because they, they bring in a lot of revenue for our city, and there's a lot of history behind those. So if that's something that needs to be revisited-
But let me add this, and not to, I'm sorry if I interrupted.
Sure, no.
Let me, let me say this. You know, we should also consider this, that, and I know we've had this conversation in the past, about the funding that organizations get from the city ought not be the only revenue source for those events, right? I mean, you know, the, you know, if they get ten thousand dollars, and I know, you know, Councilmember Andrews, you know, she's out there hustling for, you know, all kinds of funding from all these other sponsorships. And, you know, one of the issues she has, she hasn't said it, but I'll say it, one of the issues she has is that a lot of the vendors, you know, they don't want to pay the, you know, they don't want to pay the, the vendor price, you know, or the fee, because, you know, they're small, and, and there's, you know, they're, you know, they may not have the money. And so it's always good to get, you know, sponsors. So I, I look at this, and I hope other organizations, as they look at this, that they turn to other organizations for, for money. For example, and I wrote these three down, the DBIA, right? I mean, are they, do they still have, I see one of the board members of the DBIA shaking, shaking their, but, no, okay, so, you know, if I'm not mistaken, didn't the DBIA, didn't we sort of envision the DBIA contributing something to, you know, our, our Development Services is jumping out of her chair, Director is jumping out of her chair, and I think, I think she's got something to say.
The DBIA doesn't exist. The Downtown Hayward Improvement Association, the DHIA, does exist.
Oh, okay, all right.
And they do sponsor events, or receive requests for sponsorship, and do provide sponsorship to some of the same events that also receive some of the city funding, and many of them will also receive other third-party sponsorships as well to make their events run.
Can I ask this question? Like, what are some of the large grants does the DBIH-
The DHIA?
The DHIA.
It, it varies. It depends. We consider each request as they come in, based on their need. And if the, we have a certain allocation every year of money that we can provide and sponsor events for, so it really depends on the ask, and they have varied. I know that in the past, we've sponsored events for Latin Jazz, as well as Juneteenth, and street parties with the Chamber. So there's, there's been a whole mix of things. We've also sponsored, I think it was, I think last, yeah, last year, we sponsored the Historical Society's event that they held. So there's a whole variety of events, but it really depends, and the asks vary. They have sponsored the May Day Festival, so there's, there's been a number of them.
Okay. So, so, so I guess my, my point here is, the money that we see here isn't their, isn't the, the stop, the, the, the start and stop of all their funding, right? And we should, when organizations go to, you know, when they come to the city, you know, they should know that, right? Simultaneously, and, and I, we've said it up here tonight, and I just wanted to reiterate it, that I think it is in the interest of the DHIA, the Chamber, and other sponsors, and even up here, it's in our interest, to, you know, to sponsor these events, because when these events are successful, so are all the downtown merchants. And I think, I mean, you know, did I, do you know anything about K-pop?
Okay.
But, I mean, you know, for, for a weekend, for a two-day event, I mean, K-pop was popping all, all weekend long. So clearly, you know, there was, there was a benefit. So, you know, I don't, I mean, if you're, I mean, are you, you know, I mean, if you're, if you're looking for direction, I, I don't know if, this is what I fear, right? And I'll just, I'll just state the obvious. What I fear is, I don't want to sit here and go, I prefer Cinco de Mayo to be, you know, a marquee, and Kwanzaa? No. I don't want to get into that conversation, right? Because it, you know, it just, I don't want, you know, I don't want people to think that we're, you know, prioritizing some groups and, you know, and not other groups. And, you know, so let me, let me ask this. Would prioritization or marquee status, could that just sort of organically play out throughout the year as applications come in and they get evaluated?
The one challenge with the marquee event is the staff side of it, in planning-wise. So based on the funds we gave earlier, between four events, that's kind of divides our time. Unfortunately, more than four events, unless we have more staff capacity or more hours a day, be a little tough. So that's the challenge we're facing, unfortunately.
So let me ask this question, then. We kind of already know up here, like, we kind of already know the big events in Hayward, right? I mean, couldn't we just say for this year, or for like the, the year ahead of us, let's take those four events, you know, that have, you know, yielded seven thousand, ten thousand people, and just kind, let's, let's prioritize those events that clearly have been, that have demonstrated attendance, capability of drawing more rev, you know, sponsorship revenue, and, you know, and, and staff, you know, events that staff is used to, and they, they have a sort of a system already built in place, and then we kind of, sort of build out from there. I mean, I, I don't know if, if that makes sense, or, or what, but, I'm, you know, we sort of already know what the four or five events are of the year. I don't know. I'm, I'll open that up for the, for the council, and see. Councilmember Roach.
I, I mean, maybe because we're, we leave it with the three we inherited for now, and then, and let that play out, because I think they're all worthy of this status, and I think what you're saying is, it's the staff time that really matters. And, I mean, perhaps looking back on it, you know, of, say, if we're looking at Cinco de Mayo, Latin Jazz Festival, or Juneteenth, which ones were the most staff-heavy? I mean, I guess we could look at it that way. But I might, I think just sort of, given that we're starting this in a different way, going with the three that we've inherited, and then seeing how the rest play out, to, to the mayor's point, might, might be easier than sort of coming down, you know, on this one. I think everyone has different interests on what their favorite events are at this point. So just, you know, throwing that out there.
And the three that we've inherited are which ones?
Light Up the Season, Martin Luther King, and Hearts of Hayward. Is that right? Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Romano, and I apologize for not looking as far-
Good point. So one possibility is to take five events, because I think they're all five important. The three that we've inherited, Juneteenth and the Cinco de Mayo, because I think those are the main ones in my mind. They take care, or they represent the diversity of our city, if anything, at all, certainly a hundred percent. The most that we have received for Cinco de Mayo has been thirty-eight hundred dollars in, in any year. So I think any kind of donation or contribution, if it's, if it's ten thousand dollars, great, because it serves all five particular events. I think it's important. It could probably also be fifteen, whatever the case may be. But I think five is not a bad number, and I think five has, these five events have proven, at least, we, Juneteenth, three times? Four times. And, and I know that you may be considering scholarships. We're doing scholarships for our students, so that's something very important. So my recommendation would be five marquee events.
Okay. And then, you know, to reflect to what Councilmember Cyrop, Cyrop was talking about earlier, I was just sort of thinking of the, of five events off the top, and it seems like if we had those five events, it would cover the four seasons, actually, right?
I want to spread them out.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Because what I was, because as you were talking, you're saying Cinco de Mayo, well, I'm thinking the Mariachi Festival, because I think the Mariachi Festival-
Shining River.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, sure. Yeah, okay, I get it. So, okay, so, does that bring more clarity to you, Mr., Mr. Eba? Before you, before you think about that question, Mr. Ebaadi, and Mr. Cyrop, Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good conversation to have. I like the approach that Councilmember Roach is taking, where it sounds like we're starting off with what we've inherited, and then seeing how Juneteenth, the Latin Jazz Festival, and other events play into it. Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, and especially, I mean, because I think the marquee events specifically have to do with staff time.
Yeah.
And so, like, to really look at, you know, like, how much of the city is running that event, as opposed to these other ones that are really just taking grants and running them.
And so, this doesn't mean that Juneteenth or the Latin Jazz Festival wouldn't be open to getting ten K because of the size of their event. And so I guess I agree with Councilmember Roach here, where maybe let's not rush to designate something as a marquee event just yet, but staff obviously knows, and we know as a council, the importance of both events, and would see that being a tier one, you know, ten thousand dollar grant-level event, which, you know, I believe you just said, Councilmember Andrews, that you would be willing to take a little bit less, and that would be more for you.
It, festival, let's see, Cinco de Mayo festival.
Oh, Cinco de Mayo, sorry.
Yeah.
Understood.
Councilmember Andrews, yeah.
And I know you were bringing up the process of selecting tiers. You didn't, you were okay with those being tier one? Are you okay with that? Because I know you were-
I, I mean, if, if the tier, if the tiered system were, if it, if it, if it works into this, that's fine.
Yeah, so I'm fine with dropping it down, and making sure that we have the concierge services more important to me than the funding part, to be honest. And then it will support the, 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 for Cinco de Mayo.
And also, real fast, just for clarification, the, the tier system is for grant funding for special event application. The marquee event, not only is the funding coming aside, but it's also the staff side of building out. So marquee events actually have a staff element. For the grant funding, we're here as a concierge service to help with application fees, but not actually planning the event itself. So I just wanted to throw that clarification out there.
I, I need the staff.
Okay, so it sounds like the Juneteenth event does need staff support. Is the Cinco de Mayo festival just needing more funding support, or does it also need staff support? I'm just trying.
There's staff support, just as with any event downtown, because you need to clean the street, close the streets. But that's about it, as far as staff support. Well, in our particular case, we also need waste management to bring in the garbage cans. But aside from that, it's the, the grant itself and the staff that closes the streets.
So I guess that, just hearing that-
And, and in addition, not to interrupt, but in, in addition, it's not only close the streets, but it's also security and, and some, and-
We, we purchase our own security for the Cinco de Mayo. Juneteenth, you had security?
This past year, we did.
Right. But there's insurance, there's the Porta Potties, et cetera.
Okay, so I think what I'm gonna suggest here, then, is that it sounds like Juneteenth does need the staff support. I would recommend Juneteenth being a marquee event for that reason. However, it sounds like if Cinco de Mayo were to apply under this new structure, you would be eligible for a significant amount of funding, and, and a little bit of permitting support as well. Does that work for you?
It, it's fine with me. Eventually, I'd like to see it as a marquee event.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm just, this is just my own observation. Marquee, a marquee designation really doesn't matter unless an event actually gets the resources it needs. I don't know. I mean, that's the way, yeah, and I think that's a little bit what you were saying, too. But, okay. Mr. Ebaadi, did you write all that down?
I did. And actually, thank you for the clarification. It makes sense that, like, like Councilmember Cyrop was saying, funding-wise for Cinco de Mayo makes sense. They hit the tier, the, the tier one application, basically. And as for a marquee event for Juneteenth, that will give you the staff support. So it sounds like from recommendation, I, we can do that for that.
And I guess we have one more point of-
Just a quick one. I just wanted to clarify, I, I think I'm also differing the, the maintenance and services staff time versus, versus the city staff time on these events, right? Because a lot of these events take the maintenance services to close the streets and all of that stuff, right? So that, I am differentiating that.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I think in that, in that case, like, Cinco de Mayo needs the maintenance services, normal stuff that you would need to close the streets, and Juneteenth, we're talking, actually needs city staff time. And that's where the marquee part comes in.
I was just gonna clarify. I, I think maybe if we not talk about it as staff support, because it's all city staff supporting different things.
Okay.
But programming and planning support versus-
Okay.
Providing of city services.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I didn't know how to differentiate it, what I was saying. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Ebaadi has written everything down, and he's got it all articulated in his notebook. Welcome to the dais, Mr. Ebaadi, and thank you very much. And if there's no other questions or comments-
Questions, and say Regina Youngblood's name.
Oh, and I, the, the, our assistant city manager, Regina Youngblood, was the one that made the clarifying comment, so you didn't say your name, but that's okay. I didn't, and I didn't even say it either, so I apologize. Mr. Ebaadi, thank you very much. Appreciate-
Thank you for your time and the feedback. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to close that item. We have item number nineteen. This is an informational item, and it's the informational report for fiscal year twenty-four, quarter three, quarter four, semi-annual capital improvement, capital improvement program progress report. This is only here for council reading. If you have any questions, feel free to raise your hand. Councilmember Andrews has a question.
It, it can come back later on.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be tonight. I brought this up before. Neighborhood partnership versus neighborhood improvement grant? I don't know the difference. So if someone can tell me, that'd be great. If you don't know, tell me later.
I don't, off the top of my head, I can certainly check in with Director Mary.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cyrop.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. For the folks in the public that are watching this meeting, or are crazy enough to stay up this late to do so, this report, this informational report is worth looking into. If you have questions about construction- If you have questions about construction projects in the city, you can see what percent complete it is, what status it's at, you know, what Public Works is currently doing with it. I know we get a lot of emails around, what's the status of the speed bump? What's the status of this building? That's what this report is for. So I encourage anyone that has those kinds of questions to dig through this and see if your neighborhood is amongst these projects. It's just more of a PSA. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'd like to move on to council reports and announcements. And I think, I believe, although the light hasn't lit up yet, I believe Councilmember Andrews has a report for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the city of Hayward's staff as well as the city library, the downtown Hayward library, particularly Director Alderman, John the Alderman. I was, well, I wanted to bring something different to Hayward. There are K-pop events that happen throughout the Bay Area, but I wanted some, something that the city can experience, but also to open the door to another path for teens and young kids. This is a whole cultural movement that's happening with music and it provides a healthy outlet for our teens. And I was pleasantly surprised to actually get the support of Urban League, Greater Bay Area. And I requested that my fellow, she is our fellow from Urban League, her name was Megan Turner, and I said, "Your project to intern for me is to put on a K-pop event." And she did it in less than three weeks. And I was so proud of her. Also worked a lot with the attorney's office to make sure this happened, city staff, economic development. All these folks came together for this event that happened relatively quickly, but it had a really great turnout. We had between 1,500 to 2,000 people over the weekend. They were able to purchase merchandise that is hard to get, apparently. But we partnered with K-Pop Republic to make this pop-up shop happen. But it wasn't just a pop-up shop, it was an experience. Kids were dancing, they were complete strangers, they were getting to know each other, they were friends, they were trading cards like it was a sport. We had a DJ, we partnered with Sahelia Bakery. But the biggest success stories were just hearing from the parents who said that their kids suffer from anxiety, but they can go out and memorize a K-pop dance and dance in public and have fun. To me, that was the biggest success story. We also tracked it, folks from all over the Bay Area, from Tracy, Dublin, Davis, Emeryville, San Francisco, they were coming from everywhere. So I'm very excited. And thank you to all my colleagues who stopped by. Councilmember Bonilla, the mayor stopped by, and Councilmember Roach also helped out a lot, including, her daughter was a volunteer for the day. So, just wanted to thank you all for the support and hopefully we can do it again.
Outstanding. Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Roach?
Thank you. First, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Andrews. It was such an awesome event. There was so much joy in the room. I was, it was so interesting to me because I'd heard about K-pop, but I hadn't actually seen it. So, just thank you so much for bringing that to Hayward. Like, I hope that continues. I think people will look for that kind of thing to continue. So, it was awesome. And I also wanted to invite everybody out to the 14th Annual Summer Concert Series. I think this is put on by Hard and the Odd Fellows in town. This Sunday, August 25th, there will be music at the, it's at the, the Plunge, the, sorry, the Memorial Park behind the Plunge. It's Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00. Let's see, it's starting this, August 25th, and I believe it's, is it every other weekend or every weekend after that?
Every Sunday.
Every Sunday, sorry, every Sunday after that. So, and if you come out this weekend, you're going to see some of your council members cooking for that day. So please come, enjoy a day in the park and listen to some good music. Thank you.
Councilmember Cyrep?
Thank you. Also wanted to congratulate Councilmember Andrews on a successful event. And after you visit Memorial Park to get some barbecue from our council members, I wanted to invite folks to another South Hayward Market this Sunday as well. We have a lot of events going on in the summertime at South Hayward Bart from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. I also wanted to just celebrate the fact that we had our inaugural South Hayward Market August 28th, sorry, July 28th, last month. And it's been a while since we've been on the dais, so we haven't been able to report back on it. But it was truly a group effort. It took close to a year to pull together. It is a people's budget project, which we're incredibly proud of. Eden Youth, city staff from Yirene and Emily Huang from the city manager's office and community services, services, and some interns from Cal State East Bay and their public health program, and folks from Feed Hayward, just Hayward residents that are interested in pushing for food justice, especially in South Hayward, pulled together. The organizer of the Hayward Night Market, Alex Moreno, was part of it. It was truly a team effort. We are doing four of them. It's last Sundays of each month, all the way until October. So for the folks that are interested, we hope to see you there. There'll be food, there'll be vendors, some live entertainment, and yeah, just come on out, enjoy South Hayward. It was truly a joy to hear people just say, "Oh, I live across the street, I walked here." And celebrating the fact that they had an event happening in their neighborhood. And who knows, maybe it'll become a marquee event one day. But I'll save that for another time.
What are the hours?
12:00 to 4:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zermeño.
Thank you, Mayor. So some of us will be limping, cleaning a part of Hayward over at Soto Road. That's part of the clean, keep Hayward clean task force, Soto and Greenway. So join us at 8:30. There won't be any donuts or anything, but at least you'll be, there, there will be some, no hot dogs, but there will be donuts. Okay, so come on over. Now, 8:30, Eden Greenway on Soto Road. Thanks, see you Saturday.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
I also wanted to give kudos to the Keep Hayward Clean and Green Task Force. They worked on senior yards this past weekend, so I wanted to give them kudos for helping out our residents. And also, someone wanted to make sure that I let people know that if we could consider some great dogs, bunnies and cats at the Hayward Shelter, they are looking for forever homes. I will be posting tomorrow on Wet Nose Wednesday, some of the pups that are available for you all. So just wanted to give a shout-out to the Hayward Animal Shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of notes. One, I wanted to, you know, last week and this week, school's back in. So I wanted to welcome back all the students for, at the Hayward School District, at the Hayward Unified School District. Wanted to welcome back to school all the students at Chabot College and also Cal State East Bay students started this week. So I think we hit the trifecta of all three systems. Well, and, and the little guys, zero to 10, they, they came back too. But everyone's back at school this week and so, congratulations and I'm sure there's a happy, there's a lot of happy parents out there too. But anyways, welcome back. Also, I just wanted to also support what Councilmember Roach said about the Odd Fellows Summer Concert Series. They've been doing it for many years and this year, I'm going to be at the, at the, at the park on September 8th. And a good friend of mine, DJ D-Real, will be spinning oldies, old lowrider oldies on Sunday, September 8th. And I will be barbecuing and all of the proceeds from the barbecue, we will be contributing and donating to the Hayward High cheerleading team. And so, there should be a lot of people out there. The Hayward High community will be up there, will be out there. So this is at Memorial Park, it's right behind the Plunge, from 12:00 to 5:00 or so, 12:00 to 4:00, 12:00 to 5:00. So come on out and, and grab some great barbecue.
I just want to add in competition for who's event you're going to actually go to for the concert series. We're, this Sunday on August 25th, we're, we're barbecuing support of South Hayward Parish.
Oh, okay. Who are you, who are you cooking with?
I'm cooking with Councilmember Goldstein and Councilmember Bonilla. Last year, Councilmember Cyrep came and helped us, but he does have South Hayward Market this year, so.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm...
So, you know, we're going to be cooking up some good burgers, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure your barbecue is okay. I'm sure it's okay.
Thank you.
I'm sure it's okay.
I've also got a date on September 15th where I'll be at the park, so pick your favorite council member and we'll see you there.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, you, okay, good, good, good. Okay, so I'd like to close that item. There are no council referrals. This evening, I am adjourning the meeting in memory of two just incredible, incredible community leaders. And the, the first one is, he's a, he was a local pastor, Pastor Tommy Smith from Palm La Cia Baptist Church. And, you know, Pastor Smith has, you know, he has been at Palm La Cia Baptist Church for many, many years. He has been a South Hayward voice, he has been the voice of South Hayward for many, many years, always coming to City Hall when, you know, to make sure, you know, the, the neighborhoods and the families in South Hayward are, are not forgotten and who are, and who are represented. And he was just a significant figure at Palm La Cia Baptist Church. But I also would be remiss if I did not say this. You know, Pastor Tommy Smith, he had this incredible voice, this, this voice of, you know, he was, you know, he was a tall man and, and a relatively slender pastor, but his voice just was deep. And he, at the, at the Martin Luther King event every, every year at Chabot College, he would deliver the "I Have a Dream" speech. And, you know, for that one moment in time, for those, for those minutes that he delivered those speeches, he, he would deliver them totally by heart and, and by memory. And for those minutes, if you closed your eyes, you would have thought that you were literally standing out on the Mall in Washington DC. The way he delivered it, the way he would cast his voice out, you know, it was just absolutely incredible. And Pastor Tommy Smith will absolutely, absolutely be shared. And I know some of us up here had, knew him and had memories of him and I wanted to open up the dais. Councilmember Zermeño?
Thank you. That's good to remember him. I also remember him for the voice, the smile, always making sure that everybody in his, in his church was in good shape. And he actually opened it up, opened our church to us for the fire department when we needed a temporary station. And I met him back in 1985, I believe, when we opened up our video store on Tampa and Kennison. Dropped by, "How are you guys doing? Everything okay?" Yeah. Bishop Macklin also dropped by on a different day. But the height of the man, the very good nature of the man, so thank you for the opportunity to say something. Que descansen paz el pastor Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. He was a very nice man and very approachable, even though he had very commanding presence. And his church always made me feel welcomed whenever I visited and it's a beautiful staple in the community and he will be sorely missed. Very good, very good man. So thank you so much for opening up the floor. Thoughts or prayers with his family?
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. City Manager, I'm sure we will be in contact with his family and, and I have been in contact with, with the church. And so, I'm sure we will be able to plant a tree and, and recognize his memory.
Absolutely. I'll connect with Director Roman.
Thank you. Our next, our journeyment is in, in the name of arguably one of the most significant East Bay elected officials, you know, in the last 30, 40 years. And was late California State Senator Ellen Corbett. I met Ellen Corbett many years ago and I met her when I was a college student and she was the mayor of San Leandro. And, you know, and over the years, you know, I just would see her around and she was always engaged. She would always be in Hayward doing, you know, participating in Hayward events. She was very active in the Alameda County Democratic Party. And, but I, you know, I will never forget a couple of things. You know, one, you know, she, she was a state senator, she served two terms, and she was also the, the senate majority leader for, for four years. And, you know, I'll tell you, when I, when I first ran for city council, and this is, you know, like, you don't see this anymore much, but when I ran for city council and, you know, and when, when I filed my paperwork, I don't know how she knew, I don't know who told her, but I was at City Hall, I filed my paperwork, when I got home, she called me. I had, you know, I mean, I had met her a few times and, you know, and I, you know, and I, I knew who she was, but she called me personally, she called me, and she said she would support me, she endorsed me. And I was, I had, I was pretty sort of taken that, you know, a California State Senator would, you know, would call, you know, you know, a first-time candidate to the Hayward City Council. And, and since then, she had, she has always been a friend. And then, probably the, the last, the last really good memory was right after I was elected mayor, she called me. She called me again and, you know, and she just offered support. She said, "If there's anything you need, call me, let me know." And she was always incredibly supportive and, you know, I will, I'll always remember her for that. She was always just, just a pleasure to be with and she was always happy to be around and she just had this very, just wonderful attitude, you know, about politics and about, you know, about California and about the East Bay. And so, just a, just a big, big loss here in the East Bay. And so I wanted to open up, and I don't know if anyone else had something to say, Councilmembers Zermeño?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, I first met her when she was the mayor of San Leandro and because I wanted, there are a couple of friends of mine who live in San Leandro and she was out in the street shopping and go, "Hey, how are you?" Da-da-da. And my best memory of her was somehow or other, she found that, that I was going to be given an award, a Latino dinner in San Leandro. And she called me and says, "Can I introduce you?" And I go, "Sure, why not?" She tried to say some funny things about me, but I guess it didn't work out, but it was real nice. The, the things that she said about me were really nice. That was the first time I was being introduced by a person, a VIP. So it was, it was a tremendous... Sat at our table with my wife, was very personable, she always has been. And I did see her many times at Chabot College, where she actually taught a class and around the Hayward events. So, again, a great young, a great lady, a great woman. Que descansen paz. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Andrews?
I met her a few times and the, the first time, it just seemed like you instantly know her. She's just so, she was just so warm and friendly and also kind of endorsed me out of the blue. So I guess she just does her research and then just endorses people she believed in. So I, I had a similar experience with her, so I thought that was amazing that you mentioned that. But I did get to know her a little bit when we were door-to-door campaigning. So, just, also sorely missed and a very, very nice woman, so thoughts to her and her family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and she was a faculty member at Chabot. She taught, she was an adjunct instructor and she worked at Chabot College for several years and, you know, so Senator Corbett, God bless you, and, and I'm sure, I have spoken to one of her staffers, her former staffers, Mona Gibson, and I have all the information, so we will plant a tree somewhere in her name and, and post the adjournment. So, to Ellen Corbett, Senator Ellen Corbett, and to Pastor Tommy Smith, rest easy. And this meeting is adjourned in your name. And this meeting is adjourned in your name.